Ladies and gentlemen, we celebrate the culmination of a remarkable storytelling. With final films screened in the fiction category, each film stood as a testament to its makers' unique creativity, depth, and vision. A heartfelt shout-out to our distinguished jury, visionaries who decode stories beyond their script. Thank you, our juries, for putting their mind, heart, and soul for the celebration of cinema. Please give a huge round of applause for our juries. And now, lights, camera, and happening. The moment we've all been waiting for is here. Please join me in welcoming a woman of substance, intellect, and trail-blazing passion, Gulpan Agarwal. Actor, aviator, activist, and a change-maker, who navigates skies, screens, and systems with equal L. Before she graces the avloken stage, let's get a glimpse of the stardust she so effortlessly carries within. Can we now play the audio visual, please?
I'm Gulpan Agarwal, I'm a Bollywood actor, an entrepreneur, and a gender equality activist. I always saw, like I said earlier, activism means to a larger, bigger age. I always saw, like I said earlier, activism means to a larger, bigger age. Here, how do you reach?
We're going to catch up.
Why are you here?
Because I'm tired of waiting at home.
What can you do in Mexico that you would get in trouble doing in India?
Drive on the right-hand side of the road. Because, because back home in India, we drive on the left-hand side of the road.
What a journey it has been. Gulpan Agarwal, the name echoes stardom, accomplishments, and mostly the awakening of an artist. Let's give a huge round of applause for our guest of honor, Gulpan Agarwal. We are honored to have with us Dr. Amit Bhalla, Vice President, Manav Rachna Educational Institutions, a visionary leader shaping the future of education and sports. Joining him is Ms. Sanya Bhalla, Executive Director, Alumni Relations and International Collaborations at Manav Rachna, whose efforts continue to open global pathways for students. Her dedication to building strong alumni networks and international bridges reflects the spirit of our empowerment. Mr. Rajiv Kapoor, Managing Director, Manav Rachna Educational Institutions, Mr. Ranjan Sodhi, and last but not the least, our pillar and our spirit, our Vice Chancellor, Dr. Sanjay Srivastava. Let's give a huge round of applause for all the dignitaries present here. Before we move on, let's take a moment to celebrate why we are all here. For the magic of cinema, isn't it? Avloken 2025, we received over hundred-plus entries from across the country. And we've put together a quick glimpse of incredible films and documentaries that made it to the finals. Can we please have the audio visual, please? What a spectacular showcase of storytelling. Let's hear a huge round of applause from everyone in the audience, please. Thank you, guys. Now I request Dr. Amit Bhalla to the stage to share his thoughts for Avloken 2025. Please, sir.
Hi, good morning, good afternoon. Good afternoon. So first of all, my greetings and my thanks to Gul for sparing your time and joining us here today in our celebration of a festival which speaks a lot about creativity, communication, togetherness, and the talent what our youngsters have today. So it's a good platform for all of our participants, even for us, you know, as people who are witnessing something, something like this. Because I never got a chance to be a part of a, of an event like this during my school days. Because at that time for us, it was English, Hindi, Maths, Science, some part of history and geography, and a little bit of chemistry, physics, and by the way, if you were a science student. So that was all for our learning during our school days. My compliments to each one of you and congratulations to the faculty of Manav Rachna, who is taking this dream of our founder, of creating better human beings, and talking about holistic learning for anyone and everyone who is part of the Manav Rachna ecosystem. I, I still remember our founder's words. He always used to say that, "You know, that person has to be a good son, or a good daughter, or a good husband, good a wife, good citizen, somebody who will contribute towards nation's growth, somebody who will contribute on creating an impact." And certain events like this, like Avloken, they are, they are a learning, they are a learning step towards it. So I congratulate the entire university, the School of Media in particular, Shilpi, Jasmita, and the entire team for curating this program. And would like to thank Ranjan for bringing Gul to campus. Thank you very much. Mr. Sodhi has been supporting Manav Rachna in a lot of our initiatives as our mentor for not only sports, but I see anything and everything related to Manav Rachna. Whenever you talk about something good or some high-quality work you do, so Ranjan is always available with us as our mentor. So thank you for your unconditional support and love what you have for Manav Rachna. And again, all the participants, I'm sure you would have done fantastic work. I've seen a lot of young school kids who have participated, so they are part of our media shala program, as well as school students who are studying at existing Manav Rachna schools. Congratulations to every participant, every faculty who has guided, monitored them. Thanks to the judges. Thank you, Sanjayji, for your support and love for this particular department. In particular, I see that you have a special space and a place for all of them. And congratulations to everybody who is participating and my best wishes to everyone. I'm sure I would not like to take some more time because we would like to listen to Gul. That's what she's here for and we would like to understand with certain nice, nice questions, some, some nice discussions about her life, what kind of impressions she want to give to the youth of the future. So best wishes and congratulations to everybody who has participated, who has organized, who is in front on the stage or who are at the backstage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We request you to be present on the stage. Moving on, now to honor the brilliance in our midst, we now request Gul to join us on the stage with Ms. Sanya Bhalla. Please give a huge round of applause to our guest of honor. What an honor it has been, ma'am. Requesting Dr. Amit Bhalla and Ms. Sanya Bhalla to felicitate our guest of honor. Please give a huge round of applause for our guest of honor. I request the dignitaries to be seated. And ma'am, ma'am, the stage is yours, a few words.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. How do you feel today? Is that a good or is it a bad? It's good. I'm very, very happy to be here today. I'd like to thank everyone that's part of the Manav Rachna ecosystem that enabled for me to be here today. I'd like to thank the Avloken team for inviting me. And I have to say that it makes my heart really happy that today students have such diverse options. Some time ago, we were talking about it, we were telling them that when they were in school, there were no places like this. And despite all that, some people had achieved a lot. Now think about it, how many places have they given to you? Now they are learning everything in school, college, university, which was possible until 10, 15 years ago. So if I have to say two things, and I'll say only two, first, we must be grateful and we must express gratitude for everything that we have in our lives and how we can build upon that base. Not being grateful for where you are gets in the way of where you want to be in life. And it's really, really important that we appreciate, we are today, where are we? What kind of upbringing do we have? What kind of opportunities do we have? And how can we progress above that? Those who don't listen to us, they also have to listen to us. And secondly, we should never underestimate any other person. What that means is, the only limits you have on yourself, especially for those in school, I can see some schoolchildren here, it's really important to believe that you are limitless. And you're lucky enough to be studying in a school, being in a university, where the unlimited potential in your being is literally being unleashed. Be it media studies, be it biochemistry, law, horticulture, everything is here. Now, with this opportunity, how can we benefit in this way? That's what you all have to bear. So remember to be grateful for where you are, keep an eye on where you want to be, and remind yourself every day that you are limitless. And the only limits you have on yourself are the ones you place. So with that, thank you very much for being such a great audience and listening to me. And I'm very, very happy to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. The only limit is to be limitless. Amazing words from the guest of honor. Please give a huge round of applause. Thank you for the energetic and empowering address. The stage now belongs to two brilliant minds. Joining Gulpan Agarwal is someone who has lived many lifetimes in one. From a celebrated entertainment anchor to an energy healer, from newsroom to soul rooms, Denzil Okunel is here to steer a conversation filled with candor, zoos, and creativity and charm. May I request our session moderator, Denzil Okunel, to join us on stage? Please give a huge round of applause, guys.
Namaste, a very good afternoon to all of you. I'm delighted to be here, as much as I'd be delighted to be with Gul. Yes, we can take our seats. I'd like to start off by saying something that I have, which is basically, let's put it as a crush that I've had from 1861, when I was born. But that means also that Gul was born about that time, that's very dangerous. But I remember seeing her first on stage and I said, "Do you know what? Does everybody here know Shahrukh Khan?" You're supposed to say yes, okay? And very loudly. Yes, and very loudly, loudly. Everybody knows Shahrukh Khan? What's... Thank you so much. Yay, that's, that's the kind of spirit we want. Okay, now remember one thing. What is, if I were to say Shahrukh Khan, what would you think of in terms of a... I'm talking with just a physical appearance. His pose, that one? Okay, what else? Physical appearance, remember? Minus 10, you are Shahrukh, minus 10. It's his dimples. And do you know who has the bigger dimples than Shahrukh Khan? It's Gulpan Agarwal. Now, can we give it up for her, please? Which is true. Okay, so starting off with, I'll start off with films first. I've seen a lot of your films and I would, I, I wouldn't say this is good or that's bad, I think they're all good. But where do you think your favorite film lies and why does it lie there?
You know, what you think of your work changes with where you are in life. Today, where I'm at, I think if I had to pick my favorite film, I would, I would actually pick two. One is a film called Turning Thirty, which is about a coming-of-age story of a woman who's just turned 30 and is, is sort of struggling with all the pressure that comes to women typically when they turn 30. So that's one because of what it talks about and how deeply it resonates with men and women of a certain age.
Right, yeah.
Even though it came out over 15 years ago, maybe 12, 13 years ago, I have people coming up to me every day at an airport, at a mall to say, "Oh, you know, I, I, I felt so deeply when I watched that film."
Right.
The second film that I thought today is, is a, is a favorite performance of mine would be Manorama Six Feet Under.
Okay.
Again, because of the ecosystem it was set in and by extension of Manorama Six Feet Under is a film I wrote and produced a couple, two years ago called Manuranjan. It's a short film.
Which looks like it as well.
Which is a short film which is inspired by Saki's Open Window.
Right.
And I thought that was a, that was a very decent performance. So yes, in that order, Turning Thirty, Manuranjan, then Manorama Six Feet Under.
I would do Manorama right at the top, but that's me. Because I've... So coming back to the films, and when you entered films, which is I think 2002 or 2003, somewhere, 2003, to today, how has the ecosystem changed for, one, an actor, two, somebody who's now a producer, and three, the films themselves?
So you know, there's that old saying, that the more things change, the more they remain the same. So I feel nothing per se has changed in, in, in a lot of ways. The kind of stories we're able to tell and how we're able to make those stories. I was talking to Jasmita a short, short while ago and about how a lot of the films that are part of Avloken are actually shot on mobile phones.
Right.
Now, that to me is the big change that's happening in filmmaking. You're no longer restricted by a Aricam or a, or a, or a big Venice or a Phantom massive 2, 3, 4, 5 crore rupee camera and a, and a entourage which accompanies the camera or 150 people crew on a film set. What has changed is that today you can make films literally with your phone. You have to have an eye for composition and of course, a mind for storytelling. The kind of stories that are being told has, has also changed on account of that. Because there's no longer an entry barrier to storytelling, the way it was about seven, eight, nine, 10 years ago. What does it mean for an actor? An actor is always going to be at the mercy of producers and directors unless the actor chooses to make their own films. Which is why a lot of successful actors worldwide have chosen to produce their own films. Because they get to tell the stories they want to tell and showcase the best in them. So an actor today, an actor 20 years ago, an actor 50 years ago is always going to be dependent on somebody finding them suitable for a part and then more. So that's not going to change and I don't see that changing in the near future. But it doesn't stop the fact that the barriers to filmmaking and storytelling have come down. I think it empowers actors, if they have a storytelling side to them, to be able to make their films, to contribute in the filmmaking process.
Okay, if there was one thing that you learned from the films that you took forward into life and now is very much a part of your life, what would that be?
Existing in the midst of 150 people set and being grateful for that. Because you may have a five-minute net-net part in the whole day, but to make that five-minute of stock or five-minute of footage that effectively gets shot, I mean, on an average budget production, six to seven minutes is really what you can shoot in a day of usable footage.
Right.
And 150 people typically work 14 hours to make that happen. So appreciating the role of a team in putting something together, the patience that comes with being on a set, understanding that the end product is process-oriented. It's one of those jobs where you don't see an outcome immediately.
Right.
And the outcome is going to be seen very differently from what you've done at work. And so I think for me, the ability to coexist with different kinds of people, patience of taking, trusting the process and knowing it'll work in terms of the outcome, these are two takeaways I take with me every day.
Okay. A lot's been said about how an actor chooses their roles. I've seen over time, you have chosen differently. And when I say differently, I mean sometimes it's, it's because it's a popular film or you'd like to make it that way or you've been part of it. And the other is to choose a film that is hard-hitting and has a kind of a strong story that backs it up. Now, when you're choosing your films, like we choose everything else in life, what are the parameters that you guide that choice on?
So I think in life and in, in filmmaking, you're actually defined by the choices you make. And in films specifically, it's the choices you don't make that define you more than the choices you make.
Okay.
So the kind of stuff that you've chosen not to do is definitive of who you are, right? That's really, really important. I mean, if you've chosen to not do a certain kind of film, you're making a very powerful statement. And that is true for every kind of actor. An actor that's chosen to do a certain kind of cinema, which involves singing and dancing and being dressed a particular way, is very clearly saying, "I'm here for this particular period. I don't have a view on how I'll be viewed 5, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. I don't care."
Right.
There's a very powerful statement being made when the kind of choices you make. On the other hand, somebody who's choosing to make a film or be part of a film where in time to come, they will still be able to be seen the way they would like to be seen is also a choice that they've made. So I think those are choices that all actors inherently make in terms of what they want to do. And it tells you a lot about them as human beings. And while we're not here to judge or pass judgment on anybody, for me, I've always said this multiple times, my acting career has been an enabler of everything else I want to pursue, be it public life, be it entrepreneurship, be it activism. And my choices have been determined as a result of that prism.
Right.
I need to see the world through the prism of what my long-term goals are. For me, acting is not an end in itself. It's a means to an end. And your job should never be an end in itself.
Right.
Regardless of what that job is. As a doctor, your job is not the end. The job is a means to a better end, building a life for yourself, facilitating saving of lives and all of that. But just being a doctor is not an end in itself.
Right.
However, the disproportionate amount of attention the media industry receives, people sometimes mistakenly, for some period of time or the other, eventually it all dawns on everyone that this is not the end. They begin to believe in the myth that this is the end. It's only a means to an end. And because when, and depending on how you view acting as a career, the choices are then determined by whether it's a means or it's an end.
Okay. Talking about a means and an end. Now Gul is a multi-faceted achiever, if I may use that word, because mountain climbing, riding, F1 rallying, you've done it all, right? And you're a mom as well and, and you take that very seriously. Now, I'm only going to start off with the mom bit, okay? Because that is something that I believe is, is, is our best gift and our toughest competition. So how do you view this phase in your life? What is your take-home every day from this phase?
Well, it's a very challenging phase. I mean, there's no two ways about it. Because you're actually crafting a human being's destiny.
Right.
And every single action of ours has an equal reaction on their lives. Hopefully not opposite, but...
No, I think if you do it well, you'll get the right one.
The thing is, you know, raising young children has been written about, has been spoken about since time immemorial, since the beginning of human civilization. And I think women and men have done that instinctively for a very long time. And, and I feel instinct should never be skipped. There's, there's this whole view on new age parenting, which sometimes completely goes in the face of what your instinct is.
You mean go by the book versus go by instinct?
What I'm trying to say essentially is, is instinct and intuition is really, really, for me, very important as a parent. While also being empathetic to my child. If I, if I'm trying to impose on a, on a... If I'm trying to impose on a seven-year-old child the kind of ideas that I have come to today's spouse, you know, at middle age, at forty-six, it's unfair. And the third thing that I think about as a child, as parenting a child, is always trying to be a role model. Because you've got to show them rather than tell them.
Yeah.
And anything you want your child to do, you must be capable of doing yourself. So, I took my son skiing two years ago. And I could either be a mom sitting and sipping coffee in the cafe while my child skied or I could be skiing with him, learning.
Right.
I'm giving you a small example.
Yeah.
So, I think the strongest...
Did that mean that you fell over as well?
Oh, I didn't because I've been athletic for a very long time, so it came quickly to me. But my point is, the biggest lessons I've learned from my family, from my parents are because those lessons were taught to me by example, not by speech.
Right.
So, I try and be a role model for my son. And not just for my son. I try and be a role model for everyone in how I must conduct myself, especially under pressure. Because someone, somewhere is watching you and emulating how they ought to conduct themselves when things go wrong. And you don't have to be a famous person to do that. Especially for teachers, especially for parents. We're all role models. Sometimes you could be a role model without being known to anybody, depending on how you handle a particular situation gone bad. Somebody could look at you and say, "You know, I really liked the way he handled that situation. I'm going to do that next time." So, role model-ship is our most fundamental thing in life as parents, as human beings, as somewhat moderately famous people. And I take that very seriously.
You're saying you're moderately famous.
Famous is relative, right? It's relative.
No, you're not. I mean, that's being modest. But, okay, my next question. And this is a very important question. It has to do with every single parent on the planet, especially today. You handle fifty hats at a time, right? One, how do you choose when it comes to having a son at home, right? How do we make those choices in order to apportion our time right?
I think two words come to mind. One is prioritization. And then the second thing is compartmentalization. And I think wearing many hats is what human beings have done since time immemorial. I was doing a short interview with Devanshi from Radio Manav Rachna earlier. We have been multifaceted since the beginning of time. Since when we were hunter-gatherers. It's agriculture and settling that changed all of that. It forced somebody to become a cobbler, somebody to become a tailor and so on and so forth. Because the idea of efficiency of division of labor came into play. But the fact that we were essentially capable of doing everything ourselves, growing our own food, stitching our own clothes, was something that we were born with. And genetically, we've only been settlers for what? I mean, twelve-and-a-half thousand years. So genetically, you know, DNA takes a very, very long time to change. So genetically, we're all in the jungle. We may be sitting in this wonderful air-conditioned auditorium, wearing clothes we buy in shops. But our DNA and our genetics still put us in the jungle. Which means we still have the skillset to do multiple things and excel in those things.
Right.
That's what differentiates us from our simian cousins.
Yeah.
The very fact that we can do more than just other animals, right? Now, so as somebody who's raising a son, for me, it's important that I make him sensitive to gender while at the same time desensitize him to gender stereotypes.
Okay.
So, when I say sensitive to gender, it means that he has to look out for what kind of behavior pattern he will display with respect to girls and women. He has to be aware of it. We don't raise our young boys typically to be aware of themselves, aware of their actions and the consequences of their actions. I want to raise a boy who's got survival skills. I don't want to raise a boy who's waiting for a woman to come into his life to cook, clean and take care of his house. It's absolute... I mean, too many women have raised sons like that. Let's stop that today, right? So, it's important that we raise our boys to be equal stakeholders in life.
Right.
And they need to see that again, back to role model-ship.
And to not see themselves as being equal before they start.
I think they have to see themselves as a part of a whole, not the whole.
Not the whole, right.
Unfortunately, patriarchy conditions boys to be the whole.
Right.
And not the part. They're a part of a unit, not the unit. So, I think it's important to make them realize that we have to raise them as people who are stakeholders and equal partners in everything. And while doing that, try and not impose gender stereotypes. That, oh, you know... And sometimes, you know, we don't realize it. I want to make calls in the car, so my husband will drive. And then I'm like, you know what? Let me drive on the way back. Because in his head, Papa drives and Mama sits in the front and puts on lipstick. It's a bad example. Because it gets conditioned in their heads.
Right.
Small things like that.
Yeah, and it's the small things that add up at the end of the day.
I mean, we may have figured out a partnership. Maybe one day I'm tired and my husband will make a cup of tea. More often than not, I'm the one who's tired and he's always making tea. But the symbolism also of it on children, that dad makes tea as often as mom makes tea.
Right.
Is very important.
Then that's a very important lesson for all of us to learn. One final question before I let you go. And that is, if there's one thing that, and you've done everything, that I understand would be a bucket list for me.
You're very kind.
No, truly, you've done a lot. I mean, a whole lot more than a lot of other actors in Bollywood. Let's just look at that from that stereotype, so to speak. But one thing that you've not done that challenges you today and you would like to do?
I want to learn how to play a musical instrument with some degree of competence.
Yay!
So, that's my goal and I want to do that.
And you want to sing along as well?
I think singing for actors is not difficult because we can copy.
Right.
So, we can... No, if I'm told to do something a particular way, I can do it. I'm competent to be able to do that.
Right.
So, I'm not worried about singing. Because that's... Not to say, I don't mean to belittle or be disparaging of singers who train for years and years to be singers. But I think with a little bit of training, actors can bridge that gap quicker than, say, people who've not been exposed to the performing arts.
Right.
But an instrument requires a certain level of dedication. Because, I mean, I can sing. I don't have to be good at it, but I can sing. Who cares? But when you play a musical instrument, it has a sound. It has a sound a particular way.
Okay, thank you so much, Gul, for being with us. And this was pearls of wisdom to everybody who's listening. I hope that you guys have a take-home on this. Hello? Do we have a take-home? Yes or no? I want a loud yes. That's the way. Thank you so much, guys. Thank you, Gul.
Thank you so much for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you for such an engaging conversation. Now, the stage is open for two questions. So, may we have the questions, please? From this side.
Does anybody need a mic?
Yeah, please.
I... I really am interested in acting. So, how to act without getting shy?
Okay, very good question. What's your name?
Nareen.
Nareen.
Nareen, everybody's acting all the time. Right? So, that's the one thing that we've got to always be aware of. So, you don't have to be shy because everybody around us is at some level acting, right? We're trying to be... Your teachers are acting like teachers. They're different people at home. You're acting like a student in class. Well, you are a student, I'm not doubting that. But you're different from school and different in home. So fundamentally, the human being that's different from its chimpanzee cousins is already acting all the time. Because we're thinking and always micro-second guessing how we should speak. Like, you've thought about this question before you asked this question, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Exactly. So, you're already acting. Now, how do you excel in that? Firstly, remove the fear that, "What will people think of me?" Human beings are born actors. All human beings are acting all the time. Now, do you want to make a profession out of it? So, two things are really important. One is training at that vocation. The building blocks are all there. You have to train better with some technical input. There are lots of training schools. And in the summer vacations, which will be starting very shortly, you could consider enrolling in one. A big part of acting is being comfortable speaking to a room full of people. And a good stepping stone to moving to acting classes would be public speaking. It's really important to be comfortable speaking to a number of people. That's how you first get rid of your shyness.
Yes, ma'am.
So, public speaking followed by acting school. And one very important piece of advice, acting is an uncertain career. So, before you make a career choice, you should make sure that you have other things going on for you rather than choosing to just be an actor.
Sure.
Because anybody can be an actor. Thank you, Nareen.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Now, we have time for one last question.
Ma'am, this side. Here, 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 ma'am, here.
A girl is waiting. She has her hand up. Two girls here. So, we'll take these two girls and then your question.
Fine, ma'am.
And then, I know it's four, but this girl and the lovely girl in the red jacket and then you.
Ma'am, my question is, how can we stay so confident on camera?
It starts with being confident first. Camera comes later. You have to believe that there's no one as amazing, as cool as you. And you have to believe that inside. And then speak confidently. If you're confident, sitting here, talking to me like this, you're already confident on camera, forget the camera. The camera is just a mirror with a refractive lens which is projecting an image. It's like a mirror. If you can talk to yourself in the mirror, you can talk to the camera. But more importantly, like I said to Nareen, it's important to be a competent and comfortable public speaker first. There are many actors who are terrible public speakers. But most good public speakers are also good actors. So, be confident because you are already a cool, amazing rock star person.
Thank you, ma'am.
And then we're coming back to the last question, which is the gentleman on my right.
Okay.
The girl at the back, please, in the glasses. She's been raising her hand for a long time.
Good afternoon, ma'am. I'm Jyana Khanna from MRIS 14. I wanted to ask that, who was your inspiration? Who made you choose acting? And how did you make a lot of change in our society?
So, who was my inspiration? Well, I think I grew up in a time where films were very far and few in between. I mean, you didn't have like five movie channels. You didn't have many things. You know, you could watch a movie once a week on the government broadcasting channel, which is Ru Darshan. So, I think my only reference, I wouldn't say inspiration, my only reference point for acting was Himma Malini, Zinat Aman. But when I came to be in a position to be able to exercise some choice, I think I was quite inspired by Shabana Azmi. Because I was more aware, I had more access to more films as that. Now, coming to society and giving back. When you are more privileged than others, for various reasons, luck being a big part, especially in public life, luck plays a very, very big part. And you have to be cognizant of it. You can't be that big-headed to believe that everything is me. I mean, things have to be in the right place at the right time for everything to happen in a particular way. So, we all have a certain burden of privilege of different kinds. Sometimes luck is your privilege. Sometimes privilege is your privilege. So, we all have a certain element of privilege. And I think actors or not, we all must do what we can to give back to people who don't have that kind of privilege. And I think Shabana Azmi was doing that way before anybody thought it was cool. So, I think, again, for that also, watching the path already tread by other people who've made significant contributions to society in multiple roles. Because we all must do it. We are here, sitting in this room, when temperature is probably touching forty-three, forty-four outside. That's privilege. We have to be aware of that privilege. We have to be aware of the privilege that we have air-conditioned homes and cars that are air-conditioned. We're not traveling by state buses, government buses. Now, what are you going to do with that privilege? It's something we must keep at the back of our mind. And your mind and, you know, everybody's mind. So, when that is at the back of your mind, figuring out what to do, society will come naturally. Using your platform, using your influence in multiple ways. But be aware of the privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
One last question.
It's here.
One last question from the gentleman.
There was a gentleman that I shot down earlier, sorry about that.
Hello, everyone. I am Nakul. And ma'am, my question is, ma'am, as an actor, होता क्या है? एक पेज का है, डेढ़ पेज का कभी मोनोलॉग मिल जाए? तो मैं वो याद हो जाता है कई बारी लेकिन जब हम परफॉर्म कर रहे होते हैं तो समटाइम्स इट्स लाइक की भूलने लग जाते हैं, कुछ हो जाता है इमोशन छूट जाता है, जो पर्टिकुलर इमोशन है तो मैं ऐसा कुछ टेक्निक है, कोई ऐसी पर्टिकुलर एक टेक्निक जो आपने सीखी हो जिसको हम ब्रेकडाउन करके वो मोनोलॉग याद कर पाएं और साथ-साथ परफॉर्म करें तो फिर कोई दिक्कत भी नहीं है इमोशन भी वहीं की वहीं रहे
तो, आई थिंक दो चीजें मैं इस पे कहना चाहूंगी एक एक्टर का तो जॉब है की लाइन तो भाई सीखनी है उससे तो कोई इसकेप नहीं है अगर मोनोलॉग है तो वो सीखना है हजार बार पढ़ के सीखना है तो हजार बार पढ़ के सीखना है और जो बहुत ही सक्षम अभिनेता होते हैं वो आपकी लाइन भी सीखते हैं, अपनी लाइन भी सीखते हैं तो अगर अमिताब जी से कभी काम करने का मौका मिले किसी को तो वो बताएंगे, मैंने एक फिल्म की है उनके साथ उन्हें अपनी भी लाइंस पता है, मेरी भी लाइंस पता है और पूरी सीखी हुई है and that is what a prepared actor does on set. You come learning not just your lines. Because how will you react? अगर आप जिससे बात कर रहे हैं आप उनकी, चाहे आपका मोनोलॉग और उनकी सर दो ही उनकी पंक्तियां, दो वाक्य हो उनके पर अगर आप सही तरीके का इमोशन नहीं ला पाएंगे वो आप तभी ला पाएंगे अगर आप उसके दृष्टि कौन से डायलॉग सोच और परफॉर्म कर सकते हैं नॉट आज नॉट कॉम्पिटेंटली की भी आपको परफॉर्म करना है पर आपको थोड़ा मन में रहना चाहिए की भाई जिससे मैं बात कर रहा हूं, उसके मन में क्या गुजर रहा है और उसकी क्या डायलॉग्स हैं? वो भी आपको याद करने हैं फिर, लास्ट पार्ट आता है आपका खुद का मोनोलॉग उसकी एक टेक्निक है की आप स्वयं को भूल जाएं की मैं, आपने नाम बताया अपना?
Nakul.
Nakul.
Nakul. मैं Nakul को भूल जाऊं और मैं सोचूं उस किरदार के नजरिए से, किरदार का नाम है राम अब राम उस परिस्थिति में किस प्रकार से सोचेगा? राम के मन में क्या होगा? राम की क्या महत्वकांक्षाएं हैं? ये हमें सोचना है, एक अभिनेता होने के, uh, के के नाते हमें सबसे पहले किरदार के दृष्टि कौन से सोचना है और एक बार हम किरदार के दृष्टि कौन से सोचना शुरू करते हैं ना और खुद को भूल जाते हैं फिर इमोशन नहीं निकलता हाथ से और अगर आपने इमोशन पकड़ लिया, फिर लाइन तो हमने सीखी हुई है दो-तीन हजार बार पढ़ के वो तो करना ही है, वो तो परिश्रम करना ही है पर जो इमोशनल कर्व है, वो आपको मिलता है किरदार की तरह सोचने से मैं ये नहीं सोचूंगी की गुल को भाषण कैसे देना है अगर मैं यहां पर, अभी मैंने एक, हाली में किरदार प्ले किया था, रेनू चौधरी का um, एक सपोर्टिंग पार्ट है, पाता लोक का अगर मुझे पाता लोक की रेनू की हैसियत पे यहां भाषणबाजी करनी होती, मेरा बहुत ही अलग नजरिया होता क्योंकि मैं रेनू की तरह सोचती, रेनू का बैकग्राउंड सोचती, रेनू की क्या अभिलाषा है थी जिंदगी में, कहां फंस गई, क्या हुआ, क्या नहीं हुआ अगर आप किरदार के दृष्टि कौन से सोचेंगे? हर चीज़, कैसे सोता होगा, कैसे कैसे पिता होगा, कहां आया होगा, उसका उसके पिताजी के साथ क्या रिलेशनशिप था? ये सब चीज़ों का उस किरदार की इमोशनल ग्राफ पे इंपैक्ट पड़ता है अगर आपने इमोशनल ग्राफ पकड़ लिया, लाइंस में कोई दिक्कत नहीं पड़ने वाली है I hope that helped, Nakul.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Yeah, it really helped. Thank you, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's been a true pleasure to have you with us, ma'am. Truly inspiring words coming from you. I hope, uh, all of us have, all of us are taking something or the other today with us. Uh, please give a huge round of applause for the guest of honor. Truly inspiring. I would request the guest of honor and the dignitary to please be seated. There's been a change of plan. I would request Denzel Sir to please be there on stage and request Mr. Rajiv Kapoor to join us and facilitate for such an engaging conversation that's taken place. So many insights, wonderful words, wonderful thoughts, perceptions. Please give a huge round of applause. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. I would request the dignitaries to be seated. I would request the students to be seated. The faculty coordinators. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a huge round of applause for the guest of honor. It's been a true privilege to have her here with us. तालिया रुकनी नहीं चाहिए, please.